Public hearing, this public hearing held by the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board is called to order and is being held pursuant to KRS Chapter seventy seven District Regulation. Notice this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing is being held via video teleconference. Instructions I make in written and oral statements via video teleconference have been distributed. Oral statements must be presented today and they should be concise. All statements will become part of the hearing record. There are two instructions, oh, I'm sorry. There are two items on the agenda. The first is a proposed enforce board order with Louisville Gas and Electric Company to be reviewed today. Ms. Hamilton, will you please present the proposed enforceable board order with LG&E?
Thank you very much. As the board may recall, we brought this to your attention at last month's meeting. And we have held it and held another public hearing in response to a comment that we received. So today, the district brings again an enforceable board agreement with more of course consideration to secure the transfer from LG&E to the district. About a hundred tons of nitrogen oxide or NOx emissions from the shutdown of LG&E's Mill Creek Unit One. As background, Louisville Gas and Electric Company currently operates an electric generation power plant, the Mill Creek Generating Station in Jefferson County. In this instance, following action by the Kentucky Public Service Commission, which required the shutdown of Mill Creek Unit One and Two, the district issued LG&E's district issued permit for construction of LG&E's new natural gas combined cycle unit. This will be known as Mill Creek Unit Five, the shutdown of two coal-fired boilers, Mill Creek Unit One and Two respectively. The new natural gas combined cycle unit, Mill Creek Unit Five, will use dry low NOx combusters in the gas turbine and low NOx duct burners in the heat recovery steam generator. Based on the district's review, the construction authorized in the construction permit. The following emission reductions are expected on completion. Reduction of nitrogen oxides by four thousand thirty-six tons per year. Reduction of carbon monoxide by one hundred and seventy-four tons per year. Sulfur dioxide by one thousand one hundred and eighteen tons per year. Bind particulates by two hundred and twenty-three tons per year and carbon dioxide by eight thousand three hundred and thirty-six thousand tons per year. These emission reductions were calculated using a baseline actual emission as measured by continuous emissions monitoring systems. Mill Creek Unit One was retired at the end of twenty twenty-four and accounts for two thousand two hundred and fifty-one tons of the NOx, while Unit Two is expected to be retired in twenty twenty-seven and accounts for the remainder of the total reductions. Construction began on the new natural gas combined cycle unit in July of twenty twenty-four. On January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, LG&E filed an application requesting the creation of emission reduction credits for pollutants associated with the retirement of Mill Creek Unit One and specifically sought an emission reduction credit of two thousand two hundred and fifty-one tons per year of NOx-related emissions to be banked pursuant to District Regulation two point one-two. This is the result of that Mill Creek Unit One shutdown. These emission reduction credits are also referred to as offset credits. Offsets are emission reductions generally obtained from existing sources located in the vicinity of a proposed source, which must offset the emissions increased for the new source or modification and provide a net air quality benefit. The obvious purpose for requiring offsetting emissions decreases is to allow a non-attainment area to move towards attainment of those national ambient air quality standards while still allowing for industrial growth. LG&E may use these offsets for projects it may undertake or transfer them to another entity that needs them. Of the two thousand two hundred and fifty-one tons of nitrogen oxide emission from the shutdown of Unit One, the district has issued an emissions reduction credit to LG&E under ABCD Regulation two point one-two for one thousand nine hundred and ninety tons per year of NOx emissions. This amount takes into account a hundred tons that LG&E agrees to transfer to the district and a hundred and sixty-one tons to be used as an offset for future emissions associated with Mill Creek Unit Five. EPA guidance provides that an air pollution control agency may use emission offsets to replace another emission control as long as the offset is reproducible, enforceable, surplus, quantifiable, and permanent. If approved by the board, the enforceable board agreement secured the transfer of about a hundred tons of offsets will be included in the pending reformulated gas non-interference demonstration as a federally enforceable provision of the Jefferson County portion of the Kentucky State Implementation Plan. At last month's meeting, a question was asked. If we don't secure the agreed board order, is there another mechanism to complete non-interference agreement? And there is. The permit could be included in the stated plantation plan. However, that process requires a lot more management over time as the permit itself may become modified, which would require reseal when it's renewed. And so in order to provide flexibility for the district, EPA, and for LG&E, the use of an enforceable board agreement is preferable.
Thank you very much. Ms. Robbins is Representative LG&E. Anybody make a statement?
No.
Thank you. Have any members of the public to make an oral statement this morning? No. Okay. Has any member of the public submitted a written statement?
Yes, I'm Gary of the Kentucky Resources Council submitted a written statement.
You?
I've reviewed the LG&E ABO slash enforceable board agreement with Louisville Gas and Electric Company. Thank you to the board for allowing additional time for a full review and apologies for not being present in person. I only note that the one hundred and sixty-one ton per year of NOx emissions reserved, quote, to be used as an offset for future emissions associated with Mill Creek Unit Five does not appear to cover the full amount of potential or projected actual emissions associated with that project. According to the application for Mill Creek Five, the full total potential emissions from new emission units includes a hundred and ninety-nine point nine zero tons per year of NOx. I recognize the full offset doesn't need to be implemented until prior to startup of the new unit and don't request the inquiry to be denied, only that more will be required in the future. I have no further comment on behalf of KRC at this time. Thank you again.
Thank you.
The board would like Mr. King to respond to.
Sure.
This is going to be some stuff. I'm Matt King. I manage the district's permitting program. And I apologize, it's on us. We use our own language and we sometimes don't exactly translate it perfectly. So the general term offset, I think, is being used correctly here in air pollution permitting. There's a concept of offset that is applied if a major modification or major new construction occurs. For a non-attainment pollutant, you have to offset that increase by a greater than one-to-one ratio. So in this case, it was a hundred and ninety-nine, let's go two hundred ton NOx increase. If that were a standalone project, brand-new, it will be over the one-hundred-ton threshold for non-attainment new source review and they would have to get two hundred and twenty, one-point-one times the offset. In this case, they're netting out of the applicability of that. And I know that seems silly, but in netting, you are proving you don't need to go through that bigger. And to do that, you need to bring your potential emissions to below the significant level, which for NOx is forty tons per year. So Mr. Gary points out, it's a roughly two-hundred-ton PTE. We used a hundred and sixty-one tons of this reduction so that it would net to below forty tons increase. A thirty-nine-ton increase is what this the permit, the banking permit acknowledges, and that still leaves a hundred tons with this order for LG&E to transfer that to the district. Please ask questions. I don't think that's simple or easy to follow, but we did use the word offset. Again, you're offsetting costs. You can offset all kinds of things in air pollution permitting. Netting and doing an offset are slightly different.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get to questions in a minute if there are any. Are there any members of the public here in the editor's room that wish to make a comment? If so, please step to the podium and give us your name and anybody you represent if other than yourself.
Is this comment specifically for the?
It is.
So there's another comment period after this?
There will be, yes. Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on this video teleconference? Please raise your hand via video teleconference and you will be called on. This is a feature you can find on the participants list by pressing star three. If joined by phone, you will be called upon. Nobody?
No response.
Okay. Any members of the board have a question?
I have a question for Director Hamilton. Of the twenty-two-hundred-some tons banked as a result of closing Unit One, in this agreed board order, these are much smaller amounts, so they have a bunch left over, which you said could be transferred. Does that mean they can be sold or what's likely to happen there?
These do have a value. So on the marketplace, they could be sold. Back in the day, when we had a lot of air pollution to reduce, we often saw a market where there was just a general price associated with them per ton reduction of particulate matter or nitrogen oxide. That's a marketplace we don't control. That's something that the parties among themselves would agree to. But yes, it could be that they transfer them to another entity and that there is a, be associated with that transfer.
Does that transfer him to take place within a certain time period or?
Yes, they have to be contemporaneous. So these are not things that last forever. They have a usability.
This year contemporary?
No, there's a longer time period.
Longer time period.
So the regulation allows for several types of use for these credits. It does talk about netting. Netting is really well-defined in the major source, new source review rules. It's a five-year window for most facilities and a ten-year window is contemporaneous for a power plant, electric generating unit. With non-attainment offsets, and we haven't done a lot of this first, we've been in attainment for most pollutants for a while and we don't see projects that are large enough to trigger that. But I believe that that is dependent upon when your first SIP submittal on that non-attainment, which sets your inventory and some of your budgets and things, that that is the furthest back that those credits can apply to that pollutant in non-attainment. In an areas like California where you may have multiple pollutants, you may have a three-year window for VOC and NOx for ozone. You may have a five-year window for PM. You know, for us, the PM or the ozone standard, which is our only pollutant or non-attainment for, that's a twenty-fifteen standard. The non-attainment date was twenty-eighteen when it was official. So I would believe anything banked after that twenty-eighteen date could be used for an offset in our current non-attainment with ozone. But the reg allows for us, because this is important, usually larger installations, I do believe there's a lot of language as deemed appropriate by the district. So there's an additional level of oversight. You know, it can be from a different county, but it needs to be the same non-attainment area. Someone couldn't get an offset from Pikeville and use it here. Our offsets wouldn't be valuable in northern Kentucky. But southern Indiana, Louisville, Bullock County, Oldham County. But again, I think it's it's one of the rules that opens up more discretion for the district that if it won't really do what it's supposed to do, which is for a true offset to make this new project clean the air. It's a three-hundred-ton project. You're going to remove three hundred and thirty tons of relatively recent real-time reductions, but it could be four or five years ago.
But the district has effectively veto authority at some level or approval authority at some level?
Certainly a judge would weigh in. I think if you pushed that, but I think if you said, hey, look, this it's a, it, you know, it's quite often, my understanding, again, we don't do a lot of this here, that you may have a series of shutdowns and maybe you would go with the oldest one and say, we're not gonna, that's not going to be pertinent here, but that's purely speculative. I just the gaming of this system has, I think in the past was more common and then because it's a forty, fifty-year-old program, a lot of that stuff, the policy and reg has, you know, and the companies that do this right, they're looking at that intent and it can be a useful tool in getting back into attainment while still allowing some economic growth. But I acknowledge that as folks hear about this and maybe don't see all the different pieces of this, it's natural to assume there's a way to really gain it. And that's something we really try hard to watch for, but we don't see a lot of it because we haven't required an offset in my twenty years here. No one has built that big of a project. But there's also offsetting reformulated gas, which is more that general term. It's not as well-defined as a ratio that you'll see. As you go to more severe non-attainment, that ratio kicks up. It might be one-point-four to one, you know, if you're severe non-attainment. So really it's meant to drive cleaner air and not stop expansions and growth.
Okay. The regulatory provisions that Mr. King mentioned, those are very prescriptive. We are working currently as a marginal non-attainment area, opt up to audit. If we were to be opt up further or a new standard come out, we were to be deemed, say, serious non-attainment, how much more you have to reduce goes higher. So it is intended, it's supposed to clean the air, clean the air. What we're attempting to do with this hundred-ton is to replace the emissions benefit that we receive from reformulating gas. The reformulated gas nitrogen oxide emission reduction that we see today is much reduced from programs first started back in nineteen ninety-five. NOx, nitrogen oxides are our primary ozone driver. We see about eleven tons per summer day, no, eleven tons per summer ozone season of NOx reductions from reformulated gas today. You can see with this hundred tons that we're asking to secure, we're giving ourselves a cushion. So that's why that difference is there.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions from board members? All right, moving on. The second item is the proposed agreed border with Environmental Demolition Group LLC. We'll see who's going to do this with Mr. Gavett.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The district brings for the board's consideration an agreement with Environmental Demolition Group LLC, known as EDG, which operates a regional environmental remediation company. The district alleges that EDG disturbed asbestos-containing material without following proper workplace requirements as required under asbestos rules. During the summer of twenty twenty-four, EDG was performing asbestos abatement work at the University of Louisville JV Speed School of Engineering. During inspection on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, the district compliance officer observed dry, uncontained asbestos-containing material on the floor in the workspace and bags containing dry asbestos-containing material. The district returned on July eighteenth, observed that the asbestos-containing materials had been removed from the floor, that polysheeting was adequately covering the workspace, bringing the site into compliance with asbestos rules. The company has agreed to pay a fine of seven thousand five hundred dollars to resolve the notice violation. The district made this agreed board order available for a thirty-day public comment period, but did not receive any comments. The district recommends the board adopt the order as proposed.
Thank you. Ms. Robbins has a representative Environmental Demolition Group LLC registered to make a comment?
No, never.
Has any member of the public registered to make an oral statement?
No.
Nope. Any members registered to make a written statement?
No.
Nope. Okay. Are there any members of the public in the editor's room that wish to make a comment related to this proposed board order? If so, please step to the podium and give us your name. Saying none. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a brief statement on this video teleconference? Please raise your hand via video teleconference. You'll be called upon. It's a feature you can find on your participants list by pressing star three and you will be called upon. None? Okay. Any questions from board members? Nope. Okay. This concludes the public hearing portion of our meeting this morning. I now call the regular meeting, the Louisville Metro Pollution Control Board Order. We're conducting the monthly board meeting today via video teleconference. I will take a roll call when I call your name. Please unmute and please respond with here. Jeffrey Coburn.
Here.
Candace Shroeb White.
Here.
Here.
Marissa Neal. Turn mute.
Here. No, it's not on mute.
Okay, we heard you. Thank you. Charlie Bell.
Here.
Sojaj Jamil. Charlie Bertolone.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Hamilton, introductions this morning.
Very pleased to introduce two new staff members here at APCD, Michelle Peterson and Libra Neer Kuru. Ms. Peterson. Our new executive assistant. She joins our admin team and will help support, among other things, the board's work. She has a bachelor of arts degree from that, worked at State University and more than twenty-six years of administrative coordination, project management, and workplace facilitation experience from her career at ATT. Libra Neer Kuru joins our program planning team as an environmental coordinator. Mr. Neer Kuru has a master's of science degree and can atmospheric science from Texas A&amp;M University and more than six years' experience in climate risk assessment, emissions management, and sustainability strategy. His skills in climate modeling and data translation will be put to good use in our air quality modeling work by including transportation and source emissions and community engagement, including air quality sitrep projects. Please join me in welcoming them to APCD.
Welcome and thanks for joining the team. We look forward to working with you guys. How about the public recommendations this morning?
I'm going to slip one in.
Okay.
I do want to recognize that this is the season for us to be out and among the community, tabling at events, including at this week's celebration at the Alberta Herb Jones Park. Dean Lynch, assisted by a number of staff members here at APCD, represented the district at that wonderful park. We have a sensor in that park. You can see the data from that on EPA's fire and smurf map anytime you wish to see it. And it was very hot, warm, and a wonderful day. Chair Sullivan and his wife Cindy Sullivan stopped by to see the team and we appreciate them.
Okay. The minutes of the public hearing and regular meeting held on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five were distributed electronically for review. Are there any comments from board members on those minutes?
No.
All right, hearing done. Those minutes are approved. Now we'll go to the public comment portion of the meeting. Has anybody disrupted, registered to make a comment this morning?
Yes, Ms. Ameneel Cochran. Good morning. This morning, I'm talking a bit about Anderson Wood, which is located in the Parkland neighborhood. Neighbors have complained about the wood dust emissions that come over the fence line, which is against regulations. They've had multiple fires. They've had an explosion in the past. And so a lot of times when these things happen, companies are like, or people in general are like, well, that's, you know, that's how industry runs. So we had someone come and do a walk-around of Anderson with us who does, his company does some kind of work that helps companies fix things that are wrong. That's the best way I can describe it. So I'm going to read to you something that sounds like a whole bunch of gibberish to some, maybe not to an engineer, I don't know. But this is one possible thing for the dust emissions because we don't want Anderson Wood to say, well, they live near a dust factory, so they're going to get dust, which is associated with some forms of cancer can ignite and catch on fire as their dust collectors have caught on fire in the past. Okay. So it says the, oh, one more thing you should know is that the neighbors say that sometimes they will see employees on the roof of Anderson Wood hitting the baghouse dust collectors to unplug them. This is what neighbors are saying. So this is what this expert says. His name is Bill Human, by the way. You guys might know him. The baghouse plugging is likely to be caused by too much dust at certain times, sticky dust and/or larger pieces of wood that may be collected by the ventilation system. Just above the rotary airlock in the conical hopper section under the baghouse cylindrical body is the most likely location where the plug starts to form, then build up from there. A larger rotary airlock should help. This can be attached by cutting off the hopper above the current discharge elevation and adding a cylindrical spool section that matches the inside diameter of the new larger rotary airlock. Now, I don't barely know what that means, but I'm giving that to you to take and explore because Anderson Wood is a fire hazard. We all know what happened in the Clifton neighborhood with Gibodon. They exploded. Anderson Wood has exploded, had an explosion in two thousand thirteen. Three fires in twenty twenty-three. If you look at the run reports from the fire, from the fire vaults, you will see that their safety systems do not work well. One fireperson quoted in the narrative that the sprinkler was ineffective. And we have neighbors who are at risk. So I'm hoping that you guys take this. I'm hoping new folks, you take note and not get too assimilated too soon. And I hope that you all trust community when they come and say that there are problems that the air pollution control district is not addressing. You don't have to tell Rachel, she's not going to like to do that. But think in your mind critically about the people who come into this room from the community that are telling you they are being dumped on by industries and their health and their safety is at risk. And so I'm just asking the board, any, please engage with Anderson Wood because they talk about the cost of making these fixes, but the cost to people living near them is much greater. This guy says that this fix here, probably only around ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Ms. Robbins, has anybody provided a written comment this morning?
No.
Any members of the public in the editor's room that wish to make a comment? If so, please step to the podium and give us your name. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a brief statement on this video teleconference? Please raise your hand via video teleconference. You'll be called upon. This is a feature you can find on your, on the participants list or by pressing star three. If joined by phone, it will be called upon. None? Thank you. This completes the public comment portion of the meeting. We actually do have one item of unfinished business, which is the proposed enforceable agreed board. The enforceable board agreement with LG&E. The district has recommended that the board adopt the proposed enforceable board agreement with LG&E. Is there a motion to adopt the agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Any discussion? Okay, I will now take a roll call. Please unmute your mic and say yes if you wish to adopt the proposed enforceable board agreement with LG&E and no if you do not. Jeffrey Coburn.
Yes, agree.
Candace Shroeb White.
Yes.
Yes.
Marissa Neal.
Yes.
Yes.
Charlie Bell.
Yeah.
Charlie Bertolone.
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The proposed enforceable board agreement with LG&E is adopted. Moving to the new business, there is includes the proposed agreed border with Environmental Demolition Group LLC and the annual election of board officers. The district has recommended that the board adopt the proposed agreed border with Environmental Demolition Group LLC. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed agreed board order?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion from the board? If not, I will take a roll call. As before, please unmute your mic and say yes if you wish to adopt the agreed board order with Environmental Demolition Group LLC and no if you do not. Jeffrey Coburn.
Yes.
Candace Shroeb White.
Yes.
Yes.
Marissa Neal.
Yes.
Yes.
Charlie Bell. Charlie Bertolone.
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The proposed agreed board order with Environmental Demolition Group is adopted. Now we're going to move to the second item on new business, which is the annual election of board officers. We asked the board secretary to lead us through the I asked the board secretary to lead us through the discussion or the election process, Ms. Robbins.
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. Consistent with state statute, the board's bylaws require that officers shall be elected by ballot in July of each year to serve for one year. The board's bylaws provide those officers of the board shall be a chair and a vice chair, and that each officer shall be of a different political party affiliation. The board's bylaws also provide those officers are eligible to secede themselves. This means that the same officers can be elected to these positions multiple times and in succession for the length of their tenure on the board. Before we begin the process of electing officers, I will provide a brief overview of the duties of the offices and the requirements of the officers as laid out in the bylaws. First, the duties of the chair. These include presiding at all meetings of the board, calling special meetings of the board, appointing all committees, signing contracts on behalf of the board, providing for the implementation of all board action, performing such further duties that may be required by law or requested by the board from time to time, being the official spokesperson for the board in all matters, except when someone else may be designated to be such spokesperson. The duties of the vice chair are to perform the duties of the chairman when the latter is unable to perform these duties due to absence or incapacity. We will now begin the election for the office of chair. Do we have a motion to open the floor to nominations? Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we will now hear nominations for the office of chair. Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Steve Sullivan.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan has been nominated. If there are, are there any other nominations? If there are no further nominations, do I hear a motion to close the floor to nominations and proceed to the votes?
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Do we have a second? We will now conduct a vote. Because there is only one nomination, the bylaws require only a voice vote. When I call your name, please cast your vote for Mr. Sullivan by saying for or against. Steve Sullivan.
For.
Dr. Jeffrey Coburn.
That's good. For.
Candace Shrope White.
For.
For. Marissa Neal.
For.
For.
Charlie Bell.
For.
Mr. Bertolone. Oh, Mr. Bertolone.
For. Yeah, I mean, unforgettable. I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Sullivan has been elected as chair. Uh, we will now conduct the election for the office of vice chair. Do we have a motion to open the floor for nominations?
I'll nominate Dr. Coburn.
Oh, that was a motion to open.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's do both. I'll make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second to open the floor? Thank you. Well, we will now hear nominations for the office of vice chair. Are there any nominations? Mr. Sullivan has nominated Dr. Coburn. Any other nominations? There are no further nominations. Do I hear a motion to close the floor to nominations and proceed to a vote?
Close the vote.
Close the floor.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We will now conduct a vote. Uh, because there is only one nomination, the bylaws require only a voice vote. When I call your name, please cast your vote for Mr. Co, Dr. Coburn by saying for or against. Steve Sullivan.
For.
Dr. Jeffrey Coburn.
For.
Candace Shrope White.
For.
For.
Uh, Marissa Neal.
For.
For.
Uh, Charlie Bell.
For.
And Charlie Bertolone.
For.
For.
Um, this, uh, Dr. Coburn has been elected as vice chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, the elections of the officers are complete. I will now turn the meeting back to you.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on, we'll go to committee reports, which there are none, which brings us to the director's report. Director Hamilton.
Thank you. At the moment, APSCV does not have any open staff questions for people to apply to. Metro has instituted a new 30-day hiring, uh, from posting to hiring plan. And so, they've asked us to not post until we can be sure that everyone will be involved in the interviews available. So that we post for five days, we have interviews the next week, we'll make a decision, and then go through the onboarding process.
How do you do that exactly?
Well, uh, that is a good question, and we'll find that out with this new engineer. One position, we will be posting.
So, can you clarify just a little bit? You said that they post for five days, but you have to ensure that they're available to interview?
We have to have the interview panel that we'll use.
Oh, your panel.
So, we've had some people out for vacation already.
I got you.
So, we need to know we're available and that we gotta get them in. So, we need to, to be sure when we're ready to address those positions, that we're also ready to perform that process. Union negotiations continue. Uh, we've had two meetings already this month, then one more planned later in the month. Uh, we are down to the financial pitch. Uh, so this is the last part. It's probably the first important part. I am very hopeful that we'll be, uh, completing negotiations this summer. It's been 13 months at this point, and it needs to, to come to an end. So, Metro Council has taken action to approve the fiscal year 26 budget after last month after the board's meeting, which included a 5% cost of decrease for most non-union employees. As we discussed last month, the district receives about 23% of its funding through two categorical federal grants, one for our particulate matter monitoring program, PM 245, and the other, uh, under Section 105 of Clean Air Act that supports our general operations. As part of the skinny budget proposed by the House, funding for those categorical grants was proposed to be zero. I wish I were summarizing what they said when they made that recommendation, but essentially, they let us know that we had plenty of time to figure out how to pay for ourselves, and they wanted to pay for us. That's a little daunting, but the House Appropriations Committee's Subcommittee on Interior, Environment, and Related Agencies released its draft fiscal year 2026 appropriations bill text yesterday for a scheduled markup hearing this morning. The draft bill proposes fiscal year 26 funding levels for EPA as well as for those categorical grants and some additional state and local assistance grants, uh, which include our grants uh, under Section 105 and 103 of the Clean Air Act. Our partners at the National Association for Clean Air Agencies have described the markup draft as kind of an opening offer, the subcommittee to start from, but it is promising that it doesn't zero out our funding. Based on their analysis, what the appropriation committee has currently drafted would simply be a 4.3% reduction from our fiscal year 25 categorical grant, uh, funding. That's, that's really good. So, hopefully, we won't see that slip any farther.
When you say that's the opening negotiation, who's negotiations between?
Well, right now, it will go to the, uh, House Appropriation Committee itself. That's where it will be today, at 10:00. So, they're already considering it, uh, this morning. It does include a 23% reduction in funding for EPA. Now, how they decide to manage their money, we may see some changes. We do know that they're scheduled for a fundamental reorganization, was previously scheduled to begin July 1, was held on for some court actions, which the Supreme Court allowed to proceed, uh, in a decision last week. So, we know they're gonna have a lot of, uh, changes in how they're organized. We also anticipate there'll be about a 11% reduction in their staff. So, yeah, for us?
11% more?
The 11% will include the reduction in force that they've already seen, uh, through the probationary employees. So, the bill does have specific provisions at this point that are specific uses, including any spending on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. It forbids the use of the social cost of carbon in rulemaking guidance for cost benefit analyses. It also prevents EPA's approval of California's waiver for zero emission small off-road engine rules and its implementation of enforcement of several recent EPA rules, including those related to the Good Neighbor Plan for OSM, new source performance standards for fossil fuel power plants, light and medium duty vehicle emissions, heavy duty vehicle greenhouse gas standards, oil and gas sector climate rules, and greenhouse gas reporting for petroleum and natural gas systems. So, here's what happens next. The markup hearing is this morning. Members will review, debate, propose amendments to the draft bill. The full committee will then consider it, if approved by the subcommittee. It'll go to the House floor. Uh, it'll be reported out for consideration and voting by the full House of Representatives, and then a similar process will take place in the Senate. If there are differences, of course, they will need to reconcile those. And again, we hope there will be a reconciled bill that will return to both chambers for final approval before being sent to the president, uh, for signature into law. The last time with the Trump administration, uh, with the first Trump administration, they proposed zero funding for us as well. What we saw then, as we've seen in succeeding years, was funding at the previous year's levels. So, we'll keep you up to date as Congress continues its work. This is interesting.
It's funny how the previous levels is dollar for dollar or with an increase in?
Dollar for dollar, not adjusted for inflation. Uh, I will shout out that state and local programs, we've become very efficient. EPA staffing has remained very flat over the last 14 years. Uh, they've seen no reductions, whereas many state and local programs have had to do a lot more with less, and the asks from US EPA, uh, continue to increase as well as become more complex. Last week, Assistant Director O'Neill and Reuptory Coordinator Robbins traveled to Frankford to attend the Division for Air Quality's annual meeting. They hold a three-hour meeting. They do an annual report, much like we provide to the board in February of each year. And then they provide essentially an annual meeting, like we hold here every month. And so, thank Plenary for going and representing the district. They always provide us an opportunity to share a little specific information. We continue to work with our transportation partners on their work, uh, which includes managing transportation projects in a way to reduce or mitigate impacts upon air quality. Very glad to have Liebert on board. We've seen some changes with US EPA's, uh, transportation-related model that would require us and our transportation partners, both here in Kentucky and Indiana, to get back together at a table and take a look at our motor vehicle emission budgets. So, we'll start that work there shortly. The local emergency planning committee had their first meeting here last Friday. They're holding a series of three trainings on hazard communication. Their role through the Emergency Planning Community Right to Know Act is to work with communities, let people know what hazardous materials may be stored near their homes, and what steps are being taken to make sure that those hazardous materials are managed in a safe and responsible way. The next meeting will be this Friday, with a last meeting next Friday. Another in-person meeting will be held here in the Edison Center, six?
In August.
In August, in the evenings. And then in September, they'll hold a training online. So, we hope you'll share that information with people who may have concerns about businesses located in their neighborhoods. Gibodon is a good example. Anderson Wood is another, where we have a lot of industrial, uh, sources that, over time, are now surrounded by people's homes. With respect to Anderson Wood, I do want to let the board know that we continue to keep Anderson Wood on our surveillance route routinely, and that Assistant Director O'Neill and I have a quarterly meeting with Councilwoman Tannie Hawkins. Anderson Wood is located within her district, Deputy Mayor George, and React to talk about the concerns, including those they raised with the board this morning. We met with them two weeks ago. Out of that, these issues related to the explosion, the fire, we're going to work to bring in other partners associated with keeping people safe here in Louisville so that they can also hear the concerns from React. And we're also looking at ways for us to work together to be sure that, uh, APSCV hears concerns from the community. We try to share those with those responsible parties, whether it's EMA or the fire department, so that we're all hearing them at the same time.
Does that include the subject, in this case, Anderson Wood? You know, that they're, are they involved in any of the conversations and here?
The people who have met with Anderson Wood at our meeting, uh, last two weeks ago, Ms. Cochran indicated that when Mr. Human, the consultant that they were meeting with, when they were looking at the facility, and they spoke with the owner of Anderson Wood. And so, yeah, Anderson Wood is aware that the community has these concerns. And, uh, not just from React or the neighbors, but also from Councilwoman Hawkins.
Would you describe Anderson Wood's interaction, uh, with the district and with these various people as cooperative?
Steve.
They've been cooperative when we've gone out for inspections and to investigate complaints. I can't speak to, are they cooperative talking to neighbors and council members and stuff, but they've been cooperative dealing with the vice sections.
Okay.
And we've committed, uh, in a quarterly meeting, uh, to meet with React, Councilwoman Hawkins, Deputy Mayor George. So, those meetings are continuing. And again, we're trying to make sure that concerns about things like fires are related to the right people, and that there's an understanding of what those other entities who have a safety role may be able to do to help address the issues concerned. Any questions about that? I know the board has asked APSCV to investigate, you know, potential baghouse controls. Planning on bringing that back to the board in September, so that'll continue to. Earlier this year, EPA announced 31 deregulatory actions, 27 of which are related to the air program. Today, EPA has announced two deregulatory actions, both of which are currently open for public comment. Very briefly, EPA is proposing to repeal specific amendments to the national emissions standards for hazardous air pollutants for coal and oil-fired electric utilities, steam generating units. It's probably referred to as the mercury and air toxic standard of MATS. It was promulgated back in May of 2024. This applies to a very limited set of lignite coal-fired units, primarily. Those units, uh, were not required to add on MATS controls like LG&E was earlier in 2015. 2015. So, it's about 7% of coal-fired that we're talking about. There is also a provision to repeal the non-Mercury hazardous air pollutant particulate matter, fine particulate matter standard. Many of those entities who were required in that earlier 2015 action to put on controls already need that fine particulate standard. Over the cycle that EPA modeled these emission reductions in, they estimate that repealing this rule would allow for 9,600 pounds of mercury to be emitted from those sources, subject to the 2024 rule, between now and 2030. In total, it would also include, uh, about 42 tons of non-Mercury hazardous air pollutant particulates. EPA estimates the proposed repeal would save up to $1 billion in regulatory costs over a decade, beginning in 2028, or at least 120 million per year. To date, EPA has received 28,000 comments on the action, and those comments are due by August the 11th. EPA has also proposed repealing all greenhouse gas standards for fossil fuel-fired plants. They are also, uh, proposing the Clean Air Act, repealing the Clean Air Act, finding that greenhouse gas emissions from fossil fuel-fired power plants contribute significantly to dangerous air pollution. That would be a predicate to removing all greenhouse gas requirements for those plants. They're also finding to make, proposing to make a finding that greenhouse gas emissions from fossil fuel-fired plants. They're also proposing an alternative, sorry, uh, to repeal a narrower set of requirements that include the emission guidelines for existing fossil fuels, steam generating units, carbon capture and sequestration, storage standards for coal-fired steam. coal-fired steam generating units that undertake a new modification, and the carbon capture and sequestration-based standards for new baseload stationary combustion turns. EPA estimates the proposal would save up to $19 billion in regulatory costs over two decades, beginning in 2026, for about $1.2 billion a year. To date, EPA has received about 12,000 comments on that action. Comments on that proposal are due by August the 7th. Any questions about that?
Are there, are there any existing plans in the country, the two-carbon capture and sequestration, storage, carbon capture and storage?
Not on a production. There may be some that are attempting it in.
So how's this going to save all that money? Nobody doing that?
It's a good question.
Okay.
Moving on, Congress has now passed the big bill, which included decisions of unobligated funding of a number of prior progressively appropriated awards, including the Inflation Reduction Act and the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Initially, the bill sought to remove Congress's authorization entirely, but per the Senate parliamentarians, it was forbidden since precision bills can only address funding, not policy. And this is where I'm going to, you date myself, you should cue up the Schoolhouse Rocks music. Yeah. The Senate parliamentarian, I've learned more about that role than I ever thought I'd need to. But the procedural limitation means that the decision attaches only to unobligated funds that have not been awarded. So that brings us to our Rubber Town Air Toxics Health Assessment Grant update. That is a Inflation Reduction Act creation. EPA has moved to terminate our $1 million air toxics health assessment agreement. We're disputing a termination under the dispute provisions, and as part of that, we just submitted our reply to EPA's response, and we've shared a copy of that reply to the Board, and we're awaiting a final decision from the EPA's dispute determination official, who is our Regent for Administrator Kevin McComber. He's got about 90 days left until he can determine. So we'll keep the Board up to date if we hear anything, and in the meantime, we continue to explore other all charges, and we'll keep the Board up to date on this.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
None for me. Anybody else?
Awesome. So with that, I'm going to, oop, we're good. So it's still going, but they, that was frozen, and we have slides.
All right. I see movement.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
It's like just, Assistant Director Flannery O'Neill is going to come up and talk to the Board about the changes we've made to the air quality report.
Okay.
I decided to let Billy.
Billy, that's fair enough.
I'm passing the baton to the expert.
Hello, Billy, the air monitoring. We made it some long, made some long overdue changes to our air quality board report. Been in the same format for over a decade. Tried to clean it up, add some more valuable information, and take away some of the information that may have been confusing or not that valuable. So we're just going to go through a few slides to show some of the pages in the report that are new, that have been changed. Next slide, please. Major changes to the, and I'll start by saying this is, these changes are based on a draft from Brian Harris, our Network and Data Supervisor, with a lot of help and data input from Will Baumann, and they've done a really good job on this. Give credit before we go into it. Changes to this report, we added a page with a map of the air monitoring sites in the Louisville MSA, which include our sites as well as Division of Air Qualities and Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Added a page with a chart and map of weather trends, which are always important and dictate many of our pollutant levels, especially ozone. We added a line chart of monthly AQI values, and that's really what a lot of the public looks at and what the air quality index is. We removed some tables from PM 2.5 data and added line charts of monthly averages. We'll go through that, but the main table we removed was that second table on the old report that just showed you monthly averages, and that's not really extremely valuable in that it doesn't really matter what monthly averages across the network are. It matters what the highest site of the network is. We, we removed the overall running tab of the ozoneous sequences page, and we're just keeping an up-to-date running tab of actual what the design value is, and we removed SO2 air monitoring report. For many years, we've not reported things like NO2 and CO because it's so far below the standard that, you know, it's not drawing a lot of concern, and so SO2 has also gotten to that point that it's well, well below the standard of SO2.
And obviously, something, you know, an anomaly comes up, it'll be included.
Absolutely. We always, we try to add special reports for anomalies such as that, and you'll actually see one of those in this month's report. Not SO2, but any kind of anomaly with the pollutants that we see, we'll throw it in there. Obviously, if we ever see any incidents of SO2, CO, or NO2, it's.
Sure is.
Yeah, it's pretty serious. So we have to investigate that, and we'll report that, for sure. Next slide, please. Okay, on the first page, after our introductory paragraph there from that, we discussed, and it's just to give you an idea of the location of our sites. We just sent our network assessment, our five-year network assessment into the EPA that really goes into why we put the sites where we do and what they measure and why they're located where they are. And so if you want to take a really deep dive into that front document, you can do so. They all have a point and a purpose, and we try to put those in places that measure the maximum concentration in ambient air for those pollutants. Next slide. The weather trends, as I mentioned, it's really hard to see from there, but we have daily temperature, temperature normals and extremes measured at the airport, and these visuals come from the Midwest Regional Climate Center. So we just incorporate those in the report for an idea. So we've got temperature extremes, and then below that in the report, accumulated precipitation, which, you know, that matters for moisture that scavengers ozone and settles out particulate matter and other things for informational purpose. Next slide. Here's the monthly air quality index summary, and that just goes through each day, and this is the maximum pollutant at the maximum air quality index. So normally, I would say 95% of the time, that may be more, the particulate matter that drives that, and it doesn't take much for a particulate matter to go into moderate. So it's there a lot. Other times, when you see it go into that unhealthy or sensitive bruise or orange area, that's more than likely an ozone day or a day where we have unusual smoke events. Actually, the beginning of this month was had been influenced by some Canadian wildfire smoke and affected the PM and ozone. Next slide, please. Here's our new representation that we do with both fine particulate matter and ozone, and this is just a graph that displays the average of the network with maximum and minimum. It's a visual display than that old tabular one, and we thought it might offer more information. And below, you see each site that measures PM 2.5 with their max and min's, and then it gives that MSA average, which again is not super helpful, but it gives you an idea of what the whole area is measuring, and they're usually pretty much all in the same.
I would note, just as a particulate matter being somewhat unusual, there's this primary standard, which is that top line that is eight hours.
The primary standard is a 24-hour standard, and the, the other primary standard is the annual standard, and that's nine micrograms. And so that's the one that we stay pretty close to a lot. If it was over nine on a day, we go into the moderate. If it was over 35 on a day, we go to the.
Is it often going above 35?
Very seldom.
Very seldom.
Very seldom. Usually what causes that is wildfire smoke or fireworks.
Fireworks.
Yeah.
This one, the average of all those readings looks above nine, but is there a seasonal pattern to this? Particulate concentrate, PM 2.5 concentrations tend to be higher in the summer.
They actually, in this area, tend to be a little higher in the winter. We can, I guess, assume that that's probably home heating, maybe some wood fire burning and things like that, but it's fairly consistent throughout the year. The only real deviations we see are from these summer wildfires. That will make it higher in the summer for sure, which it's done the last few years. But if it's a quote-unquote "normal" year, it'll uptick a little bit in a minute time.
Okay.
I think that the MSA average is affected a good bit by the Albany average, and they're using a different technology with scenes to measure firework. I'll leave it at that. Next slide, please. Oh, here's a special report I referred to earlier, and this is, we stuck in some data for early July in this June report because we had the July 4th holiday, and that's, we did, we did a couple of exceedances of that 24-hour standard of 35, both at current lane, 75.8 on the 4th and a 58 on the 5th, and that is a 24-hour average. So it's a pretty significant fireworks smoke in that group. And that's, these days, it's really not uncommon, and it's sort of surprising that that was the only site this year that exceeded. And then there's the graph below of the daily PM 2.5, and you can see what kind of difference that holiday weekend made compared to regular PM 2.5. This is, we take an ozone, done the same thing that, the same way that we represented PM 2.5 and just laid the network out visually, give you the average with max and min's on either side, and we do on the tabular, on the, on the table below, we give the number of overall exceedances of the eight-hour standard for each site. So far, just one at three different sites, so so far, so good.
Yeah. Sorry. Never a word on that. There you go.
And give credit to the air monitoring section. We also included a network data complete, and that's on these pollutants. You can see it's really high. They do a great job of interpreting and assessment, keeping everything rolling. It's been a really challenging year for that. Everything seemed to be right this year, so they're doing a great job. Next slide. This is actually the same thing that's always been important. This is the ozone design value year-to-date. So this is a pretty handy overview. It gives you the fourth maximum of each ozone measuring site for a year since 2019, and then it gives you those three here, design values, running totals, and shows you how it's changed over time. And so we're, we're looking at that standard, that eight-hour standard of seven parts a billion, which right now are a little bit over, largely due to the effects of wildfire and on ozone, I would say. And other than, oh, the last page, next slide, please. We just, oh, thank you, it's not in here, but we do have to end all for its own definitions of key terms that are in the report, just helpful to have. So that's, that's an overview, and as always, we're hoping to get some addition, subtraction. So happy to help out where we can.
Well, thanks so much for doing this. I think it, it's visual representations are easier to consume at some level, especially to the, I think, to the public, and to me, too. So I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Do we have any questions on those reports? I do have one. How's the odor from planes trending? Does anybody?
So we've had a wet, you know, we went for a little spare where it was hot and dry, but now we've got it wet, and it's been pretty moderate so far, but let's, again.
Just drive it around and see it that way.
It's early.
And we will be providing an update to the Board, this report, soon, in August, I think. It has been a marked decrease. Part of that is due to the weather. Part of it is due to the fact that MSD is actively responding to its customers and also doing a lot of work on those catch bases and responding.
Most certainly, it could resolve, no matter the cause, right? Probably continues. All right. Any questions on those reports that were, again, distributed prior to the meeting?
No.
No? Okay. I think that concludes our meeting for today. Our next meeting is Wednesday, August 20th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. Thanks for attending.